He just hasn't, he hasn't started to get up that day yet. He just said he pushed himself to the very worst.
The evening, the City of New Franklin City Council Public Hearing is hereby called to order at 6:00 P.M. This is a public hearing duly advertised in the South Side Leader Weekly Newspaper as well as the City of New Franklin website. All comments and questions shall be directed to the President of the City Council in duration of the entire public hearing. The audience must refrain from conducting any side conversations, interruptions, or interrupting the public hearing. Please be advised that the City Council may or may not render a decision on this item before this evening. Additional information may be required from the respective advocates, or additional information may be sought by the zoning administrator, city engineer, law director, or other such sources in order to reach an informed decision. Each person who plans to speak this evening shall approach the table, state his name, home address for the official record. A testimony of both shall be administered by the President of the City Council. So tonight we have a hearing, public hearing for... This is going to be the... Yeah, Here For You Child Development Center. They're located within the detached fellowship building located behind... They're looking to locate to the detached fellowship building behind the Lord's House of Prayer on 16005 Manchester Avenue, Franklin, Ohio 44319. So I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Hi, I'm Mary Summers of Here For You Child Development Center. My address is 5158 Echo Vale, Street Northwest, Spokane, Ohio 44720. I represent Here For You Child Development Center that has been in New Franklin since 2008, serving families. And we are currently looking to move our for and after school program only, not a full day program, for and after school, to the fellowship hall behind Lord's House of Prayer. I believe you, I don't know if you misspoke or responded right at 6105. I think not, you may have said 1605. It's all good.
6105.
Yeah, okay, perfect. We, all our parents are on board, the same enrollment that was at Grace Bible will be joining us hopefully with your blessing at the other location. We've got busing approval, everything is ready to go to serve the almost 42 children at that facility. Please. What would you else want to say? I'm sorry.
I'm familiar with your guys' operation. You guys were previously next door.
Yes.
And you guys moved to Grace, that's the same operation, I'm familiar with that operation.
Yes.
I don't have any questions, I don't know.
I have no issue.
I love them, I have to say that. They did such a great job. I could only speak highly, highly, highly. So I would mention favor.
I had a couple of kids attend, not the New Franklin location, but over around the wheels. It was a quality place and they provided affordable care and I'm glad we have the opportunity to continue having them in New Franklin.
I agree.
I have no questions.
Yes, but it's necessary for people that haven't worked before classes start with their students and who work after.
Alright, so I don't have any other questions, I can open up the floor to public comments. Is there anybody that has any comment? Yeah, I guess I could make a motion to approve the... approve them... Yeah, conditional use from here?
Yes. I will say.
Kelly, we have a motion in the second.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Omen?
Yes.
Motion means approved, six to zero. I will conclude the public hearing.
Thank you so much, all of you. We'll continue to serve the families.
Thank you for staying in Franklin. That's a big deal, I know how many people depend on you. So we're really happy that people can be here.
Thank you for allowing us and, yes, we're so happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, so before we start our committee meetings, I'd like to follow the same format we did last meeting, where we go into our citizens about a month. This person's been, they were born and raised in the Portuguese Lakes, they moved to New Franklin in 1986, where she raised two children, who graduated from Manchester High School. They're currently under Tutor House Commission, and her company, along with Ayers Insurance, has sponsored various events, including music events. She not only supports, supported race Kiwanis for many years, but she's also a member. She is also part of the Purple Martin team that cares for the location of Purple Martins at Penob Point. She's a charter member of the Coventry Schools Foundation and former president of the Coventry Schools Foundation, where they provide grant funding for teachers and scholarships. And she's also a member of the South Summit Chamber of Commerce and also a previous president. So I'd like to have Crystal Tanciola come up.
I'd like to meet you in the step. Somebody must have a camera. Your camera, I was like, you're the guy. Come on, get a picture. Hey, thank you. You have to speak with, yeah, I wanna, yeah. Do you have a long time?
Yes.
Why don't you show us kids grow up?
Right.
But more recently, I'll just touch on two things with Crystal, and it really says so much about her in terms of how humble she is and what a, in public service that she is. First, I'll talk about Tutor House, not just sponsoring these events, but she puts in a sweat equity too. And she's one of the first ones on the scene, she's one of the last ones off the scene, and tireless like so many of our volunteers, so that's such a big deal. And then, as our healthcare broker, and this isn't about business, but this part is, that we've been happy and thrilled and so pleased with Crystal's work, and healthcare is an expensive proposition, and as council knows, we're looking around to see what we can do in the best interest of the community to get the best deal that we can get, and we don't know what the future holds relative to what that might be, and it conceivably could be something that we'd volunteer different broker. And I've said two things to Crystal, one is, if it's a close call, you know, in my view, the scale, so it's her way, their local business, and she's been, the guys, the people that work here are so happy with her in terms of her accessibility and her knowledge and her willingness to go the extra mile. But, and then on top of that, as we had the conversation, and we gotta work a little bit with this other vendors, and what Crystal has said from day one, whatever's best for the city, whatever's best for the city. It's never been sort of like, well, you know, I'm doing, you know, and I know you mean that, that's even more impressive.
I do mean that, I'm, you know, I actually mean that, so.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm, obviously I'm resident in New Franklin and a prop member, resident, to be a resident in New Franklin, to raise my children here, so, but I really appreciate, I know there are a lot of deserving people for this, so I really appreciate being, you know, awarded this opportunity, and I just can't thank you enough, so. It's been great working with the city, and it's been great being part of the city and the community and everything, so. If I can say a little plug about the Coventry Schools Foundation, tomorrow night we have our annual corn roast, and that is gonna be held at Prime Vine Winery up on Manchester Road, across the street from Wahoos there, if you're familiar with the venue, so. We have an old fashioned country boil, you know, corn, we have live music, so we have a lot of raffle prizes and entertainment, so if anybody's interested, you know, can let me know, because I can get you a pre-sale ticket, otherwise the tickets are $50 at the door, which were five to nine tomorrow evening, so. And again, as Mr. Powell said, we, the Coventry Schools Foundation exists on grants and scholarships, grant, teachers scholarships to the students, and last year we actually had a live auction at the corn roast, and we were able to complete a moth project behind the middle school, Coventry, that's like a science learning center, collaborating with a lot of people, but the Cleveland Museum of Natural History says we have, there is a lot of species there and special things, so it's been a great project that we're actually being the seat of fruition, so. Appreciate it. We also have a, an annual Taste of Coventry event that we have a gather at the lakes always in the spring in April, so. We welcome anybody to participate in those things and support, and a lot of you do, so thank you so much, I appreciate it.
This is classic Crystal, she gets a chance to talk by herself, she talks about everybody but herself.
I'm just a little early because my mother turned 90, and at Kiwanis tonight we're having cake for her. So thank you so much again, I really appreciate this.
Thank you for everything.
Right.
Tell your mom I said hi.
I will, thank you. Yeah, Susan and I are old alumnus, so.
Yes.
Not old.
Yeah.
Yeah, former.
Yes. Went to school together and actually knew each other when she jumped us out, so.
Yeah, and her mom and my mom were in the building both together, so.
Yes, 10 years.
10 years reunion.
Exactly.
Alright, so now we're gonna start into our committee meetings. We're gonna start off with Resolution 24R53, Mr. Powell.
Thank you, we will open a finance committee meeting at 6:12 with Resolution 24R53, Resolution authorizing additional appropriations to 2024 Annual Operating appropriation budget and declaring any emergency. You recall the last meeting, we approved building a, another salt bin down at the service center, and this is just setting up that account to be able to pay those bills as a company. Questions, comments? Wave three?
Yes.
Thank you, we will ask to wave the three on this. Then we'll move on to Resolution 24R54, Resolution accepting amounts and rates as determined by the Somme County Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Somme County Fiscal Officer and declaring any emergency. And this is something that we do every year at this time, Somme County requires resolutions from the communities. Questions, comments? Wave three. Closing the Finance Committee meeting at 6:13, one minute.
Alright, our next committee meeting is gonna be Streets and Drainage for Resolution 24R55, Mr. Omen.
Thank you, we will open up the Streets and Drainage Committee at 6:14, starting with the only resolution number 24R55, a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application for the City of New Franklin to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's State Capital Improvement Program, SCIP, and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program, LTIP, and to execute contracts as required and declaring emergency. So this is primarily on the three culverts on Ratchet D Lane, Nocturne Drive, and Temple Truck culverts, right maybe?
It is, yes.
And this is just the application to get 50% off of the $797,290.
Right, right, exactly. There were four culverts up there, the, the first became an emergency, and the name's escaping me.
Overtrick.
Yeah, overtrick. It reached the point where, where it was emergent, as a result of that, we were able to apply to OPWC for emergency funds, and we were granted those a year ago, and that's in process. These three haven't reached that point. The, but they need, they need repair, and this torrential downpour that we experienced, you know, we're still trying to help out and talk to different residents up there who, who suffered water damage, whether it's directly related to this, I don't know, but these need repaired, so we're gonna need to go forward with it. It's, as you can see, it's an expensive proposition for all three of them, that does include the design and engineering, the $797,000, so we're gonna have to fold at least our half of this in the next year's budget. And we will find out, the mid-October, they start the scoring on these, and they eventually will announce a decision later in the year. But this is, this is in support of our application.
Yeah, I had a nice talk with Josh Flog about this the other day. We call these culverts, but they actually qualify as bridges based on their size. So, right now they're rated as a number three, they tend to be good, one being not bad. If they get down into one or two ranges, they could stop traffic across these, we call them, the bridges, however you like to call them. Josh said there's no current imminent danger that we have to shut them down right now, and if we didn't do anything, he said we might get one, maybe two years of ODOT inspections before they would shut them down.
So they feel they're safe enough right now that we don't have to, to worry for us, so?
Yeah, they are under reduced load ratings right now, and the signs are posted on those, in those areas.
Any other questions or comments? Wave the three? We will close the Streets and Drainage Committee at 6:17 P.M.
Alright, our next committee is the Safety Committee for Resolution 24R56, Ms. Jones?
I'll open the Safety Committee at 6:15, and this is Resolution number 23, I'm sorry, 24R56, a resolution ratifying a three-year labor agreement between the City of New Franklin and the Ohio Patrolman's Innenial Association Patrol, Corporal, and Sergeant Lieutenant units, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And we have several meetings on this, but due to what Dan has mentioned and the different things, I thought this was a very good, I thought it was a good deal for the patrolman and a good deal for us, so I think it's necessary. Does anyone else have any comments on it?
I think what you said is good.
Jim? Paul, did you have anything to say?
Well, I mean, it's, these days especially in safety forces, it's about attraction and retention, and if you're not competitive with your weight scale, it's always been difficult, but probably never more difficult than it is with police. And so this puts us back in range of contables to the cities similar to us, so. And we appreciate the fact that the, that our safety forces and the police understood that as well, they didn't come with a big slate full of crazy ideas or a big heavy wish list, so they wanna achieve this also, so.
I don't think they ever do, though, they're always pretty supportive and they really do the right thing. So we're gonna wave the three meetings, and I will close the Streets and Drainage at 6... Oh, I went past you, Jim. Maybe 6:17.
Okay.
Alright, our next resolution's gonna be a second reading, this is Resolution 24R17 for Public Utilities Committee, Mr. Styles?
I'll be opening the Public Utilities Committee at 6:19. Resolution number 24R17 is a resolution establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of adult-use cannabis operators and the issuance of zoning permits or any other permits for the building's structure, use, or change of use that would enable the cultivation, processing, or retail sale of recreational marijuana and declaring an emergency. This was a resolution originally sponsored by Councilman Daniels, a little before my time, but if anybody's got a comment, I'd appreciate it.
So, yeah, this resolution was brought to us back on March 6 of 2024, I believe it was maybe the April 4 meeting that we decided to table it to a later date, which would be today. Our hopes were that the state legislature would have some defined rules and guidance for issuing recreational cannabis permits for cultivation, sales, and so on. And from what I've read, and I've reached out to our state rep, perhaps in other conversations, they really haven't defined any exact rules and regulations at this point. They have been, from what I've read, issuing some permits, but they're only issuing to facilities that have the licensing for recreational marijuana. So it's not that anybody can go down and get a license for this.
Medical.
I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, medical, I'm sorry, medical marijuana. So, at this point, they, they're still working out the details on having finite rules. Currently under the Ohio Administrative Code, to have a medical marijuana facility, you've gotta be 500 feet from any school, church, library, playground, public park, or opioid treatment program. And I don't know what you guys wanna do as far as, this being our second reading, what you guys' thoughts are, I would hope to have more information on it by the time it got to this point, other than we're kind of in the same place that we were back in April.
Two choices, table or withdraw?
Yeah, so I'd look here, some thoughts. One of the things I kind of thought about is not necessarily putting a moratorium on the opening of a facility like this, but maybe putting a restriction on as to what areas they can do it, and maybe those areas are served by, you know, public water, public sewer, and so on, so that way you can actually define locations where you can do it. So I, just, just a thought, just throwing it out there, I don't know, Mayor, if you have any comments?
Well, as you know, the recreational sales are often running and licenses are being issued. We've had, we had two general inquiries, nothing specific, you know, do you have a moratorium right now, do you allow these, and another one had a place that, had a location that, you know, would that be available? That was several months ago, we haven't heard anything since. I mean, currently, if someone was properly licensed with the state, and they, and they fit within our, our matrix and our permitted uses, they can come. The, the moratorium, I did talk with our law director, and, and he didn't see any, any problem with the nature of the prohibition during the moratorium, if he chose to put it in place. And I'm not speaking for him, I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to, just to explain it, that it would do just that. As written, the moratorium on the issue of zoning permits or other permits for building structure use, change use, that would enable adult-use cannabis operator or cultivation process and retail sale of recreational, established for 12 months from this affected, from the date that you adopt it, the design, I mean, the basis being that City Council and zoning administrator require additional time to undertake a review of applicable law and consider possible amendments in the zoning code, which I think is what you're referring to, Mr. Powell, that you might, you know. Now, it's, we are, as you know, moving along the path of the zoning revisions to the zoning code, we're into this, you know, the stage of it where we're gonna be talking about the matrix and what's conditional, what's permitted, and the zoning districts themselves, certainly part of that, no matter what council does with this, I think will include cannabis, some, some guidance in there of where they're permitted and what the restrictions are, et cetera, so. So that's, you know, I think those will be in place eventually, subject to council's adoption. In the meantime, until they are, there really isn't any restriction as long as they, you know, as long as they fit in the area that they, and I, I can't, there's a...
I think there's a, there's a slot that they, too, we would fit, I think the law director had said that it fit into like a pharmacy. Remember that? So I don't think that would cover the recreational, but the medical it would, per our matrix now. So, Mayor said, we'll be, we're gonna visit all that with Frank, so we're not there yet.
Is that what I understood you just said, Paul?
Well, that's the option, yeah, that's the option. The question is, do you want, you know, you know, is there, I recall there was some discussion that some people felt that it was a good thing to restrict, and others felt maybe not so good.
Yeah, I think previously we're kind of split. Devin, what would you wanna do, do you want to table this again, or do you want to?
I think your, I think your idea, so the issue that lies with this, I feel, is the, the restriction of letting a New Franklin resident open a New Franklin business. Obviously, we can all recognize that a lot of businesses do not fit in certain areas, the state recognized that with the 500 feet rule, certain select areas it shows up. So I do like your idea of, you know, allowing the zoning rules in certain subjugated areas where it may work for the city, and obviously areas where it would not work, so I think that's a good idea right there. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I'm against getting type of moratorium, I believe it's legal and should be embraced, and I'm just, yeah, you're not gonna have, I'm not for it, I'm...
So, would you want to bring it back at a later time, or would you want to act on it tonight?
Yeah, it sounds like the mayor said with the redoing of the zoning law, we could probably possibly look at it again and see if it works.
But with the, if it has water and sewer, that would restrict where?
And that would restrict the location greatly. You're not gonna see it being...
Just like one plaza in our city, right? It's gonna be hard to restrict one type of business to water and sewer, not restrict it.
I don't know, that's where we'd have to have some legal conversation, man.
Just in general, so if somebody come and say, hi, I wanna do business, does this still have to go to zoning, any type of business, does it, or can it just open up? Well, the mayor said under the matrix, it says pharmacy, but it comes into, when they want to open a business, it starts with zoning.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, to make sure that that, that type of...
Not everything from zoning comes to here.
Right. Is it a permitted use within being one, is it a permitted use, depending on where they want to locate it, here's a business we wanna run, is it permitted in that zoning code, is it conditional in that zoning code, or is it not permitted at all? So, yes, they have to start through zoning.
So, based on that, would recreational, that wouldn't be considered a pharmacy?
Well, this, I'm gonna say this, that, you know, one of the reasons we're revising the zoning code is because it's ancient, and we, we run into just those types of problems, the definitions are, there's some activities that aren't defined at all, there's others that, you've got one word definition, it really doesn't span. It, it would be difficult to figure out exactly where this fit, quite frankly. And so if they came to zoning and we said, well, it looks like a pharmacy, okay, it's all right, you know, on the other hand, if we say we don't think so, well then you potentially end up in litigation. The, so those are the things that happen, that's really one of the major reasons that we're, you know, trying to approach this revision of the zoning code, so that we can, so it can be more clear.
If I may, Frank Riera and I have had conversations about this, and Frank seemed to think a conditional use would be the way to go with this, because in that way, planning zoning has a bite in the apple, and council has a bite in the apple. But all of these things, for instance, in other words, council really couldn't, council couldn't arbitrarily right now say, yeah, you can do it, but you gotta have water and sewer. That has to come through the zoning.
The 500-foot rule from the school, does that count any school property, or is that just?
The, Frank, the law says, the, the Ohio Administrative Code says, boundary of property, 500 feet from the boundary of the other property. So if you have a large, let's just call it a farm, and it's being used for this purpose and boundary, that property would be 500 feet from the boundary of another park, school, whatever, property.
So, just for the old football field, and I know when I'm kind of talking about the old bank, that's gotta be getting close to 500 from down, so is it 500 foot from that type of building too, or actually just a building where students are in during school day?
I didn't look at the Administrative Code on this.
Yeah, it's 3796 dot 6 dash 3, that gives you all the breakdowns to the location.
Hopefully school properties, because kids leave on that property like the ball seals and stuff at different times, which could be.
I mean, if you have no moratorium, and somebody walks in with an application tomorrow, that's a discussion, you know, that's when that discussion's gonna be had. Where's the location? Certainly, our law director would be involved in looking at the requirements relative to licensing, but also the Administrative Code as to, as to location, so. That happens if somebody walks in tomorrow with an application, and then it, it works its way down the course, so it conceivably, it could happen. So it conceivably, it could happen.
As of today, they're on the issue of recreational to people who have medical licenses right now. That could change.
But they could fall as well.
Mr. Styles?
Yeah, I have no problem with a business that people will have voted for to open. My issue probably, if I, if I thought about it in my travels, I've been to some states where, like, the signage and stuff around us is pretty limited. I ended up, like, traveling through Colorado, you just, you just see a green cross. That's it, that's kind of the thing. Other states, looking like Michigan, we just, I mean, you're assaulted with billboards and everything else sometimes in portages. Has zoning looked at, when we're, we're going to look at that? Are we thinking about limiting, since Ohio's not really giving us any guidance? Or are we thinking about providing our own in that? Can we?
I would say it hasn't been, I mean, I, the notion is that it's going to need to be discussed and those types of things. The attention hasn't gone to that yet.
All right.
Because it's, we haven't got there yet.
So I would guess that my question is, our need to discuss versus how quickly this is going to arise? When, when do you think that might be on the table? We get to that in our?
I think probably early, early mid '25, actually, as we're going into subdivision regs next. So I don't think it's going to happen in '24, since we're already approaching September, so. I mean, it could, but I sort of doubt it.
Is there a medical dispensary in town that I don't know?
No.
Okay. So before recreational could get here, we'd have a way to disapple to, to close this moratorium again, if it comes up, right?
No.
So we can wait for.
I don't believe they would, so.
They're issuing licenses.
Eric, we would have a chance.
They're issuing licenses for.
Recreational.
Yeah.
For the, to the holders of medical facilities.
And again, I don't want to, I'm not trying to tilt the scale one way or another. If someone were to come tomorrow to put a medical dispensary in, we have no prohibition against that. All right? And so it's, it's the same type of situation. They either fit within our, you know, probably that would probably be four squared within pharmacy, but, or medical. But in any event, it's not that just because we don't have a medical, this can't happen. Medical could come tomorrow and say they want to locate a, have a location out there. And if so, then the question would be, do they fit within our existing zoning?
I guess my comment on that would be, I prefer Ohio, provided us with some guidelines on this stuff. Lacking that, I wouldn't have a problem moving to a vote until we could provide some for our own zoning on that.
I think that seems like the only way to, to do zoning around, to actually plan.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, I think we should do this, because I think, from what I'm hearing, this would be the only way to stop it, so that we can do it properly in our zoning. Otherwise, we could get quite a few before we get around to doing our zoning. But we really wouldn't have a space for them. For not much of a space.
To stop things.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, so what, what is the, you know, I'm not just asking you, I'm just trying to, trying to figure, what is the main deterrent if somebody were to open up a shop?
I don't think any of us really mind. I think what we're trying to do is put it in a place that would be appropriate. And right now, we don't, it's, it's not our fault we don't have the zoning rules. And in a way, it is, relates to the game of getting our zoning up to date. So it is our fault in a way, but we don't have anything behind it to tell them where they can put it. We can't help them in that.
So if we have, is there a tavern law? I mean, that's the closest thing I can see. You have to be 21, try to have an ID. Somebody wanted to open a tavern, assuming they have a liquor license from the state, does that, do we have something to protect that? To me, this is closer to like a tavern, but you're not even staying, assuming it, is there?
Yeah, I think, I don't know what, my defer to the mayor of this, I mean, I don't do compare a tavern to a medical facility, I mean, what is?
Well, I'm talking about a recreational facility. Somebody, and you don't consume it, you go there like a, you know, a store.
Right.
Visit, get home, enjoy it.
This also encompasses wrong facilities and so on.
Right.
Not, not just a store.
There's already guidelines, though, right? It's not like it's the wild west.
For the medical, there is.
For, for everyone, right?
For medical.
Okay. I was thinking recreational dispensaries is what we were talking about. And there's got to be some sort of code. Someone will come up to it and say, this is where I think it falls in, and could be legal. But if we wait for other people, we're just sort of just kicking the can down the road. And I believe that this would be a small footprint and a lot of revenue. So, and it's a real positive of 10% tax that comes, I think, to 30% of that 10% comes to us. So it's like 3% of every sale comes to the city. And it could be literally $2 in total sales. Yeah, I mean, as long as we're doing it for the right reasons, because like, I really feel that people have spoken, cities have, we have zoning laws here. Now, if we can't figure it out, I'm sure our attorney or their attorney would be able to figure out where it fits. But I just think that it's, by us prohibiting it, it's helping the underground, you know? Illegal activity to take place. I'd rather get a piece of that tax or anything.
I would agree, and I don't, I don't want to tell people no, shut things down. My issue is, I don't want to come down Manchester Road and see signs that are in portages. That's what you're getting as your private nature. Is there any way we can?
That's a First Amendment issue, right? We not want to get involved with, you know, is it?
Well, I think, I think we could limit signage.
Well, I mean, it's a commercial operation, it would fall under a sign code.
A billboard.
Yeah.
Right.
On a billboard. So, yeah, I mean, there are restrictions to that. I mean, nobody can just come in and slap a big sign up. You know, they're going to have to go through the process, so. I definitely agree with Mr. Styles, I mean, you want to, you want to be by handle on that. You don't want to have, you know, a hole in the street full of signs. So, but I think we're okay on the sign code and that.
Okay.
Is there any way we can fast-track that portion of our review before instead of putting that off, so that we don't have to put a moratorium to wait on that? For my mind, that's what we're using there.
I think that would be really difficult.
And plus, we're waiting on the state.
It's out of context, we don't know how we're going to fit. There's probably some reviewing of the zoning districts themselves. I'm not trying to be negative on that, but no. I think it's, that's going to happen according to the entire process on this.
And with the state, it's still a work in progress at their level, so.
Mr. Schaefer?
I'm going to correct myself. Mr. Styles, I mean, a separate ordinance could be drawn relative to this. So that, that, in that sense, absolutely it could. Whether or not the zoning, you know, whether we want to devote the energy to that, the drafting and the planning and zoning and the public hearings, et cetera, maybe, you know, so that would be, you could try a separate track on that.
You know, I'm not a fan of marijuana, I don't advocate medical or recreational. I do understand that there's plenty of benefits for the medical side. And I, you know, the bottom line for me is, the voters said that this is a legal business. And I'll see where I can sit here and go against what the voters want. So I'm going to just trust that the state is issuing a, to the medical users right now, licenses, which will fall then under our pharmacy guidelines, and will fall under our sign ordinances, or zoning regulations. Is there going to be some bad things that can come with it? I'm sure there's bad things with everything. And there's people that try to skirt the system. I do think that there's enough money in it that the people who have the licensing are going to do everything that they can to be good neighbors, because they don't want to lose anything. So I guess I would not vote to, to limit that business coming into New Franklin.
Mr. Couse?
I just don't understand what all the hubbub's about. This is, whatever might come to us, it's a legal business, heavily regulated by the state as far as locations and operations within the business. It's not a type of thing where you're going to see Elmer opening up a stand on the corner somewhere and selling it out with his truck. These are corporations that would be coming in, high-dollar corporations. They'll, they're going to do their due diligence and know where to put it and where not to put it, where it makes most sense for their business, and for their business to be successful, whether, whether it's a grower or a distribution place. It's just, why are, why are we expending so much energy on this when, when the state's going to regulate it? Is, if it's a recreational place, again, it's going to be so highly regulated, just getting in, you have to show ID. And in these places, you're not, you can't go in and, you know, talk to someone and say, hey, you know, what do you think of this, blah, blah, blah. There's, you're ordering on a kiosk, and then getting your order and leaving. So it's, is, is a very sophisticated, professional business operation that happens. And it has to be that way if they want to keep their license and if they want to be successful. For us to worry about where it's going to be, again, the state's going to control a lot of that through, as you mentioned, Mr. Powell, that being 500 feet away from this or that, et cetera. And for the most part, it's not going to stand out any more than any other business. If this is in a strip plaza, it may have a sign across the top. They don't have to advertise, you know, a thing like that, because people are going to know where they are. And they're, you know, they're going to find, so it's, it's not going to be, I don't envision it being some type of business where we're going to get people from up, you know, driving in from all over to come in. You know, we'll have that, but then those dispensaries will be all around also. So, you know, New Franklin won't be the only ones, even though there are moratoriums around us. And these businesses, they're not going to have the weighty guy out front, you know, or anything like that. I mean, it's, it's, again, I don't understand what the hubbub is about. I don't think that this is necessary. My feeling is it should be withdrawn, and if you want to vote on it tonight, then I, I encourage you to vote no on this moratorium.
Questions? So this was brought up by Councilman Daniels, so we've got, you know, this is kind of a lingering item. We postponed it until we hoped that there'd be some more information on it, which currently there is not. I'm not somebody who uses medical or recreational cannabis, but on the same hand, I do understand that the citizens voted for this in a group. But I don't know that I want to be telling, you know, basically impressing my values on what they can and can't do. I would maybe suggest either we either throw it or just vote on it tonight. And if it does go down, then we, if somebody feels strongly enough about it, they can propose some revised legislation and bring it back to the council.
Why don't you think anyone had a problem with withdrawing it?
Does anyone have a problem with throwing it?
I don't know procedurally, since it was, that's what I was saying.
We can't, yeah. So that's why I think we should just vote on it. And if it passes, it is what it is. If it goes down and somebody wants to bring something back, we could absolutely look at it and hang it.
Eric, can I ask you a question? Do you, you said, you, Fred spoke about the conditional use permit, allowing public hearings at the zoning level, and then that also allowed public comments at the council level.
Correct.
But that would have, to have us wait.
If it is a conditional use, it would go through planning and zoning. There'd be, you know, public hearings on that. And now that our revised zoning code, everything but conditional use, like we had tonight with here for you, which is safe.
Now, thank you.
So, I mean, that's, that's what Frank thought in his expertise, so.
So I think that would be a pretty competent meeting, allow, a median to allow comments at both levels from the public, especially if they live near the facility or just the entire city itself, or maybe even, so I think that would be a pretty good way to move. So we're not inhibiting anything, but we're allowing to, more than plentiful enough time and multiple meetings to allow public to comment on the issue itself.
All right, so we're just going to put this to a vote tonight and address whatever the deal with what.
But to add, to add it as a conditional per, as a conditional use permit, you said we'd have to wait for the use of the treaty revise.
Right.
And that'd be mid, early 2025, right?
Right. Like the mayor said, you decided to circle ordinance, but I think that's kind of covered some.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll put to a vote tonight and turn it back to you. Yeah, so are we on second reading? Or that's, this second reading, close your public committees.
Okay, so we're closing the Public Utility Commission at 6:46 PM.
All right, our next ordinance is going to be ordinance 2408. Mr. Walker?
I'd like to open the Laws and Ordinances Committee at 6:46 PM. We have a second reading and also a third reading. Start with the first one, 24008, an ordinance to adopt a revised New Franklin Personnel, Policies and Procedures Manual in declaring an emergency. Thank you, President, for allowing me more time to do that. It slipped through my inbox, I looked at it, it's, in my opinion, it's fine. It was just slight adjustments and updated language for this year. Anybody else have any comments or concerns? Can we wait for the third reading? Okay, we'll vote on that. All right. On the second, oh, I'm sorry, the second ordinance, which is the third reading, it is ordinance 24007, an ordinance to amend Articles eight and 14 of the New Franklin zoning code. This took a little bit more work.
So, yes, we have a public hearing scheduled for September 4th at 6:00 PM at this location.
So we just.
Yeah, we'll just continue it on.
Continue, okay. So I would.
Is there an ETA on getting the updated changes that are versioned out on the website?
Actually, Mr. Greer is in Alaska. He's supposed to be back in the next day or two, and he's going to give me everything we need to do on the website, you know, and that. And he also is going to do a presentation of the actions, Council.
So, and when will that, the public meeting is when, the hearing?
Yeah, September 4th.
Okay.
September 4th.
So it can be up before the 4th?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
I was at, well, before that.
Okay. Good. So we, good, I'd like to close the Laws and Ordinances Committee at 6:48 PM.
All right, and our final resolution is going to be Resolution 24R-51. Mr. Schaefer?
I have to open up the Community Development Committee at 6:48. Resolution 24 dash R dash 51, Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and revise some county intergovernmental memorandum of understanding for job creation for retention, tax revenue sharing, and declaring an emergency. And we have a guest here tonight.
Hello, can you go up there?
You can.
I'm here to answer the questions from the Executive's Office of Development. It was our understanding that there were some questions about the MOU, so I'm here to answer any questions you might have. The main changes this year were the work-from-home caveat kind of thing, and the, there was discussion about the escalator of the 3.5 billion for revenue sharing. That would be one of the things that sticks in. That was not escalated, it stated 3.5 million. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know there was something about work from home that might have been a question.
Yeah, so could you maybe go into a little bit more detail on what, what was the driver behind these revisions? Was it the work-from-home aspect of business?
Yes, yes, the work was the driver. Regardless, it has been relooked at for 2018, so it was due. And yes, the work from home was definitely one of the big drivers.
So what was the major change in the previous version to the current version in the work-from-home aspect of it?
So the previous version did not, I don't think it addressed work from home, you know, it was pre-COVID, so it didn't need to. This version basically just states, kind of very situational, so a company moved, a company has 200 employees in Akron, but they sent 100 of them to work from home, and then they moved to another community. Akron wouldn't have to share based on 200 employees. It would only be the 100 employees that they moved. So if somebody's remote. So if somebody's remote already, it's not going to, it's net income.
So in reading, not being an attorney, I was kind of confused about some of the aspects of the work-from-home. And one of my concerns was, so if an Akron company had 200 employees, and, you know, it takes a lot to, if there's an incentive from the destination community.
Correct.
So if a community, let's say New Franklin has all 100 of those employees that now are working from home, is there a liability on New Franklin's part to pay Akron since those people were relocated to work from home in New Franklin? So Akron would say that I've lost 100, you know, basically income on 100 jobs, and those incomes are now being paid to New Franklin.
It would be only if the company moved from Akron to New Franklin, but if those employees were already working from home, you know, if they, so if a company with 100 employees downsizes to one office in New Franklin, and then they send everybody home, no, it would not trigger the agreement.
Okay, but if they had 100 employees, if they no longer, let's just call your company ABC. ABC has 200 employees, they now, they are going to cut the workforce in half and have 100 of those folks work remotely. And I thought there was something I know that spoke to, you know, not just one community, but if they, there's a, you know, basically enough of the other communities, they could combine those in one pot, and Akron could go after those communities as a whole to get their lost revenue back, a proportion of it.
So the way I understood it, and I'm happy to get more clarification, would be that if that, if that downsized and that 100 employees met the payroll threshold, then yes, New Franklin would only revenue share off of the 100 employees that moved, not the 100 that went from home.
I mean, even if that company stayed in Akron, but they...
If that company stayed in Akron, that wouldn't be...
That was my concern, is if, if that, you know, now Akron is losing income based on losing those 100 people because they now, they're still working for the company ABC, but they're working in remote areas.
Yeah.
And they're the aggregate of those other communities now would be responsible to replace that lost income that Akron has now, you know.
No, there's no way, I don't know that there's a way to track all of that and everything. So, yeah. But, yeah. And you're not incentivizing them to come here.
Right.
So it's not like you went, you poached the company, because the company's still where they're at. Those individuals just happen to reside here in New Franklin, so when the company says, "We're going to be remote now", and you go home to work, you didn't go to that company and incentivize that company to bring those people to work here. So you're not triggering the incentive clause in the agreement.
So that's the key, is the company, is the...
Now, if you went to the company and you poached the company and said, "I want you to relocate here to New Franklin", that's a different story.
So that's like incentive.
But your residents that are living here, that are told you are no longer in the office anymore, you're remote, be 100% remote, 50%, 80% remote, you're not incentivizing them to do that. That is a company's choice to not have them come into their physical location every day, so that you would not have, that would trigger nothing of that sort.
There's no argument that the individual is incentivized to maybe work from home because there's a lower tax rate in New Franklin areas.
Because we didn't do anything special for it.
No, it's not like you put the banners up that said, "If you work from home, there's a lower tax base here."
So quite honestly, you have to go to the company and give them some incentive to let the employee work from home.
Yeah.
Which would not be like a lower tax base for the citizen.
Yeah, you did that, but you're not...
So, previously you had, or currently, I guess you'd say you have 18 or 19 communities that are members of this, and you had, what, five that's agreed to the new terms?
She's got all the, yeah, all the ones. So as of today, we have Cyborg Hills, Norton, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 7 that have signed, and one that is intending to sign their meeting. And Akron, listen, if you want to know which communities.
I think we had five of them at the time we received it last year. Any thoughts, comments, any other questions? Yeah, I think that answers my questions.
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I only have one question.
Yeah.
As far as a date going back is for this agreement, I mean, does it take place the day of the agreement that we enter it, or can we look back to 2020 and start looking at work from home employees that were in COVID time?
No, this agreement goes effective after work first.
After work first.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming. I did want to repeat that, whatever you decide to do with it, there is a benefit, of course. I mean, first of all, it's the whole team player aspect of it, you know, which is, I think it's an important thing, as you guys know. And then the other one is the points, and I think everybody's got a grasp of that.
OPWC.
Yeah. And that's, as you see, that's written into the agreement. And there's actually the converse, is, well, there's a penalty if you poach it in, and so, so that's just sort of an added, well, more than an added bonus, it's an additional incentive for safety. That's in those, it's critical points, that's for sure. We're going to be close on our OPWC as it is. So just for example, without those 12, there's no reasoning to this in that.
I had no issue with the previous agreement. I was a little bit hesitant based on the work-from-home questions we had, but I feel a lot better about it.
I agree with you.
Yeah, my concern was if a company, because that seems to be the trend, is these companies are now working remotely, that's a real traction to people to go work for companies. I didn't want to see us get into a situation where we're now paying somebody because they made a decision to sign people already.
Thanks, you guys. So we're going to make, it's very interesting the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to stay in this meeting.
I think we missed the interest in where we have. Thank you for having us last, because I was lost. Have a good day, everybody. Thank you, have a night.
All right, so we'll wait until 3:00 AM, we'll force the Community Development Committee at 6:57.
That ends our committee meetings. I'd like to call or the City of New Franklin Council meeting for August 21st, in place of meeting and plugging tensions.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, can you call, please?
Mr. Cotts?
Present.
Mr. Schaefer?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Stiles?
Present.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Amon?
Present.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right, starting on our consent agenda here, our first readings. Kelly? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we have a motion for approval of the financials.
Yes, second.
Second. Kelly?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right, now we enter into public comments.
Anybody has any comments, please leave them to four minutes, and please say your name and address. See, none. Close all the comments. Now we're going to enter our consent agenda. Kelly, Resolution 24R53?
A resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the 2024 Annual Operating Appropriation Budget in Declaring an Emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 24R53.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 24R53.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Kelly, Resolution 24R54?
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Summit County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer in declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 24R54.
Second.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Your answer, you asked me.
Oh.
Motion passes seven to zero. Kelly, Resolution 24R55?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application for the City of New Franklin to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program, SCIP, and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program, LTIP, and to execute contracts as required in declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to the Streets and Drainage Committee. I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution 24R56.
Second.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Second reading, we've got Resolution 24R17, Kelly?
A resolution establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of adult-use cannabis operators and the issuance of zoning permits or any other permits for the building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the cultivation, processing, or retail sale of recreational marijuana in declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Public Utilities Committee. I'd like to make a motion to waive the three.
Second.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to vote on Resolution 24R17.
Second.
Mr. Cotts?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, we're voting on whether we want to vote on this or not, so we, the motion should be whether to adopt it. Okay, so the motion is to adopt this resolution?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct. We waived three readings.
Yes.
Everybody was yes. Now we're adopting resolution.
Yes, okay. So you're ready for my vote?
So Mr. Cotts?
No.
Mr. Schaefer?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Mr. Stiles?
I'd like to see us get in here on this, but since we haven't, no.
Mr. Wolf?
No. No.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Motion fails two to five. Ordinance 24008, Kelly?
An ordinance to adopt the revised New Franklin Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual in declaring an emergency.
This resolution was brought to the Law and Ordinances Committee. I'd like to waive the three. I'd like to make a motion to waive the three.
Second.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
We move to adopt ordinance twenty-four oh zero eight.
Second.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
All right, we're hearing our third readings, resolution twenty-four R fifty-one, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the revised Summit County Intergovernmental Memorandum of Understanding for Job Creation and Retention and Tax Revenue Sharing, declaring an emergency.
This was brought forth the Community Development Committee, and I'd like to make a motion to adopt, uh, resolutions twenty-four dash R dash fifty-one.
Second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Resolution passes seven to zero. Ordinance twenty-four oh oh seven, Kelly.
An ordinance to amend Articles Eight and Fourteen of the New Franklin Zoning Code.
Uh, this ordinance was brought from the Law and Ordinances Committee, and we are weaning a public hearing on September fourth, so the next week will continue. Time, time is requested, time is granted.
Time.
All right, that wraps up our consent agenda. Let's move on to new legislation, uh, mayor's report.
Yeah, you have your word there for a minute. All right, uh, okay, um, we, uh, we talked about these culverts up there in Millie Village, uh, that's the area that, uh, we heard most from, Mel to the stormwater, uh, so, uh, we are, we, we're, we're spending some time in that, we're in the process, we're not the only city that's in the process of trying to determine exactly what our duties are, what our responsibilities are, what our rights are, uh, and we can't arbitrarily help one, of course, uh, so, I, I want you to know that, that, uh, we're in discussions, and, um, but the probably most important thing to get done is, is get these culverts prepared, uh, and hope for not another hundred-year writing that comes every third, every month. Uh, hey, while I'm on that, the, uh, Parson Committee, uh, met last evening, and, uh, everything is, uh, is up, and there's one thing coming down, the pavilion at Grill Park, so the pavilion is up, the pickling tables are in it, uh, the swings are up, uh, the sliding board has been replaced, um, and, uh, it looks real nice, and there was some discussion about trying to have a ribbon cutting there, that Parson Commission talked about that last night, because it took a while for the equipment, uh, there's no organized activity up there right now that I'm aware of, primarily that the, the, the primary activity up there is the, uh, coach pitch, the northern baseball, um, so, either, the Parson had a couple thoughts, we meet again, uh, the, uh, third Tuesday of September, which is something like the seventeenth or so, we could have our meeting up there and advertise it and have a ribbon cutting for the park as it is, uh, that another thought was wait till spring when the baseball starts again, and you're gonna have more people there, and maybe do it then, uh, and, uh, a, a somewhat related thought was, um, um, and, uh, I've read this before, because we've talked about it before, uh, relative to, um, Francis Colopous and her husband Gus, uh, who were just such valiant spokespersons for the, uh, for the, for the West Side, and you know, it's funny, I write, I had to write New Franklin, the city, my city is New Franklin somewhere, I had to do that today, and when I, when I did that, I thought about Gus.
Yes.
Yeah, because Gus made that happen.
He did, and he did so much.
So, uh, it, you know, it's not, you know, it, I don't know if that's enough, that pavilion, do we want to think about maybe naming the pavilion as the Colopous, uh, you know, Pavilion, um, we felt we shouldn't change the whole name of the park, and it's been Grill Park for so long, and that seems like a little over the top, so, I'm throwing that out there for discussion at this point, your thoughts, your consideration, and Mr. Wolf, particularly for you, that's your word, uh, you don't have to decide that tonight, right? Give some thought to what would be best in terms of, uh, ribbon cutting up there.
Have they both passed?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are there any offspring?
Yeah, there are, okay, yeah. Now, I would like to consider it, and if there's anyone else, I like, from that area, it'd be really special, but, uh, I'm not opposed to it.
Francis and Gus did so much, they were just nice people, very dedicated, I mean, really dedicated.
Yeah, they really were.
They were just nice people.
And Francis served so long as on the Board of Trustees, a real class act.
Mm-hmm.
If there ever was one, um, and just was very knowledgeable, and, uh, excellent trustee, and helped with the city, creation of the city.
Yeah.
And so many other things, and personally, I would like to see the park named Decker, because they just, the park itself, because they too, uh, have done, had done so much for the community, especially for that side of the community, and that, I just couldn't say enough good things about, about the years that I've served with them.
I agree with you, Susan, and I, I do think it would be nice, and for people that don't know, or did not know them, they were just wonderful, I mean, with every aspect of the city, they loved it, and why importance it is, we all love it, and we try and do things for it, and Gus and Francis just went above board, they did.
Yeah, the one, I mean, I went by there just the other day, and, I mean, they, we've done such a nice job with changing that piece of property, and something that's really usable for that, that neighborhood, I mean, the swing sets and stuff, like, everything, it just looks really nice, the tables, around the pavilion, and everything, I, I, I think we, that, that's what I envisioned seeing in some of the other places, uh, as far as renaming it, I would be cautious of that, because there's a lot of people that have an attachment to what that property used to be, I know there was some discussion about that earlier on, uh, we heard some feedback on that, but, uh, I, I absolutely agree with naming the structure or something there after them, that would be a, a nice thank you to everything they've done, uh, when would you think, I mean, I know, I heard fall and spring.
Well, if, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna include, uh, the Colopous family, then maybe spring would make sense, um, and maybe we could do something like, you know, Grill Park dedicated to the memory of Francis and Gus Colopous, and, and maybe the, you know, the Colopous Pavilion, uh, you know, on the site, something like that, sort of a duel.
I, I'm, uh, totally in favor of the, uh, pavilion, uh, being dedicated to them, and I'd also like to see some type of plaque or marker that describes who they, who they were, and, and what they meant to the community, and why we're, uh, dedicating the pavilion to them, I also think that the springtime would be the best time to do it, uh, because, as you mentioned, the, the most activity currently at that park, and hopefully it'll grow and, and change, but currently is, is the, um, the little league, the, the T-ball there, and to have them involved also, uh, somehow, where we could get the coaches, we could have the teams there, because, you know, a lot of what's been done has been done for them, the pavilion is there for the community, but it's also for the parents that, uh, are there for their kids when they're playing ball, the, the playground equipment, the swing sets, again, for the whole community, but it's going to get used by the kid, by the other brothers and sisters, or people waiting for their game, you know, et cetera, so I, I think if we could incorporate those teams somehow in the celebration, uh, I, I think that'd just be fantastic, and be fantastic for those kids to be a part of that, and, a good experience for them.
Oh, let me take that, I'm sorry. I'm in agreement with, uh, it sounds like everybody here, and I think springtime would be better, I feel that if we do it at our next meeting, things are gonna be rushed, and it's not gonna be the quality that we, we're gonna wanna do for that. No, so with that in mind, we'll, uh, uh, we'll start gathering that info, and, and, uh, we can, if, and do a little outreach to the family, so we can organize it, uh, in a nice way, and, um, and make it special.
Great.
All right, well, I'll report that back to the Parson Committee, and let them know the thoughts, or I told them I was gonna bring it up with the folks tonight. Uh, all right, let me see, uh, Old Fashioned Boat Show is, uh, Saturday at, from nine to three over at Pitts, if you haven't been for that one, go see that, uh, it's like right outside our borders, but they still have to go across our lake to get there, so, but we wanna support them.
Suddenly, it's our lake.
Yes, our lake, mostly our lake. Farmer's Market will continue on Thursdays through the month of September?
Yes.
May, mid-September.
Mid-September?
September twenty-sixth.
Okay.
I think that's probably, no, you must be sorry, I think that's the end though. Are you putting, are you putting more days in the month?
I was just thinking it was up to seven, seven or something.
Currently, you said the twelfth would be the last day for Farmer's Market.
I thought it was the twenty-sixth.
I mean, you can do whatever you want.
I'd do it the twenty-sixth, I'll be there.
Your office is the twenty-sixth, I don't know.
Okay.
I heard it there or something.
Judy Williams would know. Well, we, it's here, we thought it was the twenty-sixth, didn't we?
Twenty-sixth.
See, I'm not nuts.
All right. Good night.
You guys are wrong.
We got the date right, but you're still nuts.
All right, Crystal, while we're talking about Low Country Boyle, we'll promote that, she already has, uh, mosquito grant, spraying, the, uh, uh, Summit County Public Health, they, they set the traps, uh, West Nile, and we remember about this, I don't know if you've ever read it, but the, uh, uh, West Nile virus was detected, uh, traps at the center road at the trailhead, uh, and also at the Peggy End, Dead End, and then they were quick to note that that's not unusual, uh, and, uh, but there's, uh, it's not, it's nothing to indicate epidemic or anything crazy like that, uh, however, that does put us on the, on the list for spraying, and they will be spraying in those two areas, uh, on Thursday.
Just those two areas?
Yes, just those two areas. And lastly, um, I hope I sent this out, well, I can't remember if I sent this to you or not, familiar, did, uh, the, uh, uh, our fire department, uh, acquired a Summit County trailer for the water rescue, and, uh, they spent about five thousand dollars outfitting it, they placed it in services, we, uh, it's much larger than what we had, it's much more functional, uh, the current trailer was purchased in two thousand and thirteen with a FEMA grant, uh, at a cost of eighty-one hundred and sixty-six dollars, and when you get a, a piece of equipment with a FEMA grant, you have to keep it at least ten years, so we're beyond that ten years, uh, and what fire would like to do that would be to sell this trailer to another Summit County Fire Department that has a water rescue team, uh, Twinsburg and Springfield Township both fit that description, uh, but the feeling was to, uh, they would prefer to sell it to Springfield, uh, because, uh, once their water team is fully operational, they're able to respond as members to the South Summit Water Rescue, uh, team themselves, and the suggested price is five thousand dollars. Uh, whenever we are selling unneeded obsolete personal property, uh, with a value in excess of one thousand dollars, uh, we have to notify council, which I've done, uh, and then we have to ask council for a motion to approve that sale, so, I'm asking you to, to present a motion to approve the sale of, uh, what is now our obsolete fire trailer to Springfield Township for five thousand dollars.
I make a motion to sell the unused trailer at the fire department for five thousand dollars.
To Springfield Township.
To Springfield Township.
Okay, you got first and a second?
Who wants a second?
Mr. Shaffer.
Mr. Shaffer.
Uh, I, if I may make a comment about this real quick, um, probably we should sell it to them for five thousand dollars, um, however, I think we should sell it to them for a buck, um, you know, we got, we got the trailer for free, we got the second trailer for free, we spent five thousand dollars on refurbishing the trailer, uh, but basically, we, you know, we got these, these two nice trailers for free, we're able to use it for ten years, Springfield, a, a, again, as, as you mentioned, they're gonna be part of the team for us, they're gonna be our, our team members, uh, when, when we're in, uh, when our, uh, uh, rescue team is in a, uh, a situation where they need help, these people are gonna be there, and they're gonna be able to bring more equipment, uh, I, I think the, the proper thing for us to do is, uh, if, if we wanna sell it to them, sell it to them for a buck, that's my thought.
I gotta tell you, I love the idea, but, uh, the revised code dictates a lot of this, my code, code talks about a fair market value.
Okay.
Uh-oh.
So we can't just dominate it to them?
I could check that, but I'm, uh, I know.
You got to donate, you got almost.
When you gotta declare the value of what it is.
The data's ready to purchase, if you want it.
Oh, yeah, all right.
Kelly? Do you have a first and a second?
Mr. Powell, yes, we did.
Well, because the state won't let us. Yes.
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 I like where your heart's at. I like where your heart's at.
Thanks.
Well, did you find it?
Yeah, but he's not telling me.
Let me just wait out a little here.
That was it, I got so too far.
Hey, and I liked, uh, Mr. Cotts' imitation of the, the guy, that's, that's, it was really good.
I practiced on that, I practiced that one.
We could see it was practicing.
I was practicing.
Anything else on the mayor's report show?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Move on to the finance report, Sue?
Um, we are still finishing up our audit, so we've got that going on, we've got, um, quite a few other projects going on at, at this moment, while we're still doing our daily, uh, daily stuff, um, I know the mayor didn't address this, but we did have a meeting with the Health Care Committee, and we are going to be sending out information to, uh, that everybody will be filling out Form Fire, so that we can get some, um, quotes from other vendors, um, and also the, uh, USI, which is, uh, the Ohio Municipal League has partnered with USI for a self-insurance pool, kind of like that, only for, um, for health insurance, and we had meetings with them, and found that the information, well, for them to give us a quote, and to see if we would be acceptable into that pool, we would have to have Form Fire, back in the day when we were self-insured, obviously, we had a census, so they could see everything, but since we are now fully insured, we don't get that kind of information, have access to it, we would have to have all the, everybody that has insurance or is eligible for insurance to, to either update if you've already got Form Fire, or, um, create a Form Fire and, uh, put all your information, and those that you have on the plan in that, in, include their information in it, so that we can get to see what the best rates are out there before we, uh, before we get our, update our insurance for January first, um, did you wanna add to that?
No, just, yeah, so, um, they suggest that they can, that there could be significant cost savings if we get in this pool, and we've been through a variety, uh, and we were self-insured, uh, and we went to, uh, the, uh, reference-based pricing, uh, saved some money there for a while, those prices started to go up, we went back to self-in, we went to fully insured, saved a lot of money just because they wanted to get us in the door, and we knew they were gonna blow us up, but we're seeing nineteen percent each year, uh, and so, now we're shopping, uh, and, uh, and these folks came on the horizon as we were having those discussions, uh, having municipal league program, so, to, 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 um, get the quote from them, they need, uh, Form Fire, if you haven't been exposed to it, is basically your health history, and the health history of anybody who's gonna be on the plan, uh, and, uh, the good news about Form Fire, if you've been through it before, it, it accumulates, so, last time it was done in New Franklin with two thousand seventeen, so when you get the data and you sign on to Form Fire, all of your data up through two thousand seventeen will be there, you're gonna have to supplement with the balance of it, I won't go to the, the, the specific instructions you'll get, uh, anybody who's gonna be on that plan, you gotta have that, put that information in there as well, it's cumbersome, uh, but it's the only way to get it, uh, and they require that, for them to give us a price, that being the case, uh, we talked with Crystal, uh, and she was already, we had already talked earlier, if you read some of the health care meetings, about comparing, again, trying to get some pricing on self-insured, we can get some pricing, but we can't get the detail about the Form Fire, so what we're doing is, we're gonna, and, and only one broker can submit Form Fire at a time, uh, Crystal would have to sign over that right to this, this other broker, so we're gonna have Crystal, uh, be the first broker, and get this information, and then she can send it out, and then she'll sign it over to them, and they can review it as well, and, uh, probably by end of September, uh, we'll have some ideas, uh, of how this is gonna play out, but that means everybody has to be really diligent about getting these done, so the, I think the notice you're gonna get will say, if, if they can't be submitted, you're gonna get it here in a week or so, within a week, uh, and you can fill it out, but we don't want you to submit it, because it can't be submitted until September third, because there's a hundred-and-twenty-day book bank, so in other words, if I submit all my information here on August twenty-first, and, um, on August twenty-eighth, uh, it turns out to, I need new heart, uh, are you green? Anyway, uh, so, it, it can only go back a hundred-and-twenty days, so you're gonna be asked to submit it, get ready, but just don't hit send, uh, until September third, but we want them all in by September tenth, so we got, so, we'll get it out to everybody, if you've got questions, please call us, if you need help getting it filled out, please let us know, the numbers gotta be right, uh, and, uh, and then we'll be diligent to give everybody a, uh, a reminder on that, uh.
If you're not gonna participate, you don't have to fill it out, correct?
Um, well, I would say that is true, however, we've gotten a little bit different views
from Crystal, so we're gonna clarify that before we send it out to everybody, and we're planning on sending out at least a couple different emails, because we have people that have been here since twenty-seventeen, that have already filled, that filled it out back then, and so they need different information, we still have their usernames, we don't have their passwords, obviously, so we can help them go to their old records, um, then there's a setup information for people that have Form Fire with a different comp, you know, with a company that they're at now, or a different place of work, how they can access that information, and then turn it into New Franklin information, and then person, uh, someone that's never been in Form Fire, so, so we're take, we've gotta, you know, tweak that, so that we can give everybody exactly the information they need, not too much, but just the right amount, so, but that one we will clarify.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if you know for sure you're not going to, then, you know, that's pretty obvious, but, with, with, with regarding against the parent, from what I understand, is somebody says, like, no, I'm not interested, and then, all of a sudden, oh, yeah.
When it's open enrollment.
I've changed my mind, you know, and then they have to reboot everything and reprice it, if you're not going to, you're better to miss on the side of caution.
So who would administer this program?
Um, it's, it's its own program, it's got safety.
You're talking about Form Fire?
No, no, the, um, uh, insurance, the.
Oh, they have one broker?
Yeah.
Uh, and it's a deal that they made through the Ohio Municipal League.
Wasn't this something like the?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, please, please.
Okay, thank you. Wasn't this something Andrea mentioned to us several years ago?
Um, no, because this is just new, they've just gotten together with the Ohio Municipal League.
We were going to go decisions before we mentioned.
Not this program, anyway.
So, so the insurance itself, who administers that, uh, what, how, do, do they go through a separate company, we currently have Med Mutual, it seems to be very user-friendly for the entire staff.
The way we're, the way, we're going off the quotes is to match our, uh, our existing coverage across the board, so we're asking for a price, what, what would the cost be So, we're asking for a price, what would the cost be to match our existing? And then there's some choices as to the.
Networks.
The network. And Med Mutual would be one of those options.
I'm sorry?
Med Mutual would be one of those options.
Okay, well, I'm just concerned that we go in privately, we make a switch, we go in and say, hey, we got this insurance thing, yeah, I never heard of it going.
No, I know.
No, it's not like that. It's not like that.
It's not gonna be like reference-based pricing. That wasn't mentioned. But no, so, and we can lean towards Med Mutual, so, just so that nobody would have to change anything, so.
And then, when we spoke with them and talked about doing this, we talked to them about Med Mutual, that we were with Med Mutual, and they said, oh, well, we can do everything just through Med Mutual, you know, they can be your network. So, in that case, nothing would change for us.
Okay.
And while we're talking about filling things in, now, don't raise your hand. I was gonna say, raise your hand if you viewed your seven-minute ethics thing. So, if you haven't viewed your seven-minute ethics thing, you're probably gonna get a reminder call from us. So, we gotta get those in, so please do that. And there's two certificates, as you know, you print them out, and one says, you put that on your wall, and if you make a copy, and the other one is another one, and so there's two that have to get turned in, so.
Yeah, because actually, yeah, because we actually need to put them in your personnel files because that is what the auditors will be looking for on our next audit. And they'll be pulling, they'll be having us, they'll give us like five or six people, or maybe more. If they want the whole file, we don't know, but they will be checking on us on the next audit. So, we really need that for those who haven't completed it. The other thing is, I know that you've got the front paperwork from the auditors. Most of you, I think, have.
I was talking about, is there another?
Nope, this is different.
It's a little more.
This is, yeah, it's just a questionnaire that they get from the auditors.
Okay.
Most of you, I think, have done them and turned them into the auditors, but one or two of you haven't. So, if you check your email for, because I know they've sent it more than once, and make sure you filled that out because that'll hold up our audit. So, please get that to them. I have nothing to do with it, it just goes straight from, you know, you to them, so.
You know the people who haven't probably done?
I do know.
Maybe send a reminder email?
Yes.
Each thing?
No, first, for the one that's missing.
Well, she's staying there too, Miss.
All right, yeah, we'll let you know. If we don't have yours, we'll get in touch with you.
Yeah, we'll let you know. But if you've already done it, obviously, you may have done it, so.
Yeah, good question, you make sure that.
Yeah. I'm calling up, I just.
I think I did mine. I'm not so sure.
Am I supposed to say, you guys complete the question?
Nope. Straight to daughters, you have done yours. So, that much I do know. So, anyway, we're working on things like this that take more time and, so we're busy, and we've downed a person, and we've got people going on vacation. So, we're working hard to get everything done, but we'll just keep on doing. That's all I have.
All right, can we move on to old business? Anybody have any plans for old business?
I have a couple things.
All right.
We were talking about, they were going to do, and I think you mentioned it last night, the Parks Committee, Committee Hall, about the walking trail. They did that walk already over at Siswa?
No, 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 well, they, they met with us, and now they're, and they toured the facility, and they're gonna come back then with an initial, some initial ideas.
When did they do that?
When were we with them? We could go Thursday? Yeah, just about.
And when are they going to come back with ideas?
I think they said like within thirty days or so. I don't know if we talked about that, but you had a survey, does the city have a survey on that piece of property? There's some questions about the property line there, and I'll be honest, I'm not opposed to the asphalt trail around there as long as it's all the city property. But, you know, I hate they even represented to approve something without knowing that what we're doing is on city property without a survey. They had some ideas, and they were gonna report back to us on that. As for whether or not we had to go to do the full survey, so. That's a lead, I mean, that's pretty easy. Yeah, surveys are a good idea.
I'm saying we could use that, aren't we?
Well, nobody seemed to know if the gas line itself is on city property, if it was just a meansman on city property, so. We'll see what they come back with, and if we've gotta go to the expense of a full survey, we'll do that. And this is gonna go in stages. They're gonna come with three possible recommendations. Then that'll be shared with the public and the opportunity for public input, opportunity for council input, and try to focus on which of those options seems to, you know, most, has the most support. And then from there, they will, they'll do some cost estimates, et cetera, so. And they'll do them in, you know, asphalt versus, for instance, crushed pavement, those kind of things.
Are they gonna look at anything other than just that walking trail?
Yeah, they're actually, we take a look at the, we asked them to expand it to some degree. We showed them what we're doing and where we might wanna do some other things. And I know we're gonna get some input back on that as well. For instance, restrooms and so on, so, they're looking at, and we may, depending on what they do initially, then whether or not we wanna expand it into a full site plan review and recommendation, we'll have to get some pricing from them and see what it would take to do that. But I think they're, I got a sense that they're gonna sort of to us, is to give us some suggestions to everybody because it's, you know, it's, there's not that much there, there's not that many options, you know.
Okay, my next thing is the farmer's market. The signs were very nice, we really want them. Thank you, thank you, go ahead, or do it. And also, we've decided to open it up to a few crafters. If people want to apply, then we will call them and let them know what we have planned for that. And I also wanna mention the Barberton Ministries. They do so much for this community, well, for most communities, but they do so much for this community. When you donate money to them, and this was something I did not know, we could go and buy groceries and donate them. But they can get it in such bulk for $50, they can feed three times as many people as we can. And they have fed, I met the lady, one of the ladies in charge that other day, and she was saying that they have fed so many lives in New Franklin, so many people that are having a hard time. So, if you have extra funds to donate, please consider Barberton Ministries, they are really excellent. And also, I think we need to schedule a little workshop. I don't know if they have any others that you're new.
Yeah, we can talk about either or, and we can look at doing that. Anybody else with old business? I just wanted to mention the Tewr House Barbecue. That was a great event, great turnout. Weather could have been a little better, but interesting.
Interesting.
But, yeah, I thought it was another great event, well-attended, well-attended by council there. That was nice to see. I just wanted to say thanks to everybody that helped last week with our lunch, that went very well. And thanks to Manchester and the Global Church for allowing us to use the building. Anybody have any new business?
I'd give a shout out to the Dragon Boat team. They took two boats up to Canada a year, two ago, and they took two gold medals.
Wow, very good. Excellent.
I wanted to bring up the Tatcha Truck, which is next Saturday, the 31st. It's gonna be, we're gonna be well-staffed with police, fire, state patrol, ODNR. Sounds like we have a race car or two coming, some tow trucks. It's just gonna be a nice, nice event for us. That's gonna go from nine to noon, and from, I think it's 7:30 to 11:00. At the Manchester, or the New Franklin Global Church, they're gonna be having the Scout's Tanted Breakfast over there. Actually, it's a big breakfast, it's not just a tanted. They've got sausage and potatoes and eggs, and it's a great spread. And it's a very good price, but very fast, so I just wanted to mention that. And another item I wanted to bring up, maybe some housekeeping, is this is kinda looking into the first meeting of next year. The first Wednesday of the month is actually New Year's Day. And I was wanting to see if you guys would like to discuss moving that meeting to the 2nd of January, which would be the Thursday? Anybody have any issues with that?
I can.
Do we need to make a motion for that, Kelly, or is that just something we can?
The meeting before meeting, you probably don't make a motion because you have a stated date and that you have meetings.
I'm trying, did we adopt the whole calendar in advance or near the end of the previous year? Because we had summer recess.
Adopt the calendar at the first meeting.
At the first, yeah.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So, we just need to address that first meeting because it's holiday. I'm sure people would like to do other things and be here on New Year's Day. So, we don't have to make that, we don't have to act on that today, but maybe we look at it at the next meeting to figure out how we need to formally act on that, and we can move forward with that. Doesn't mind if somebody brought that up to me. Anybody else with new business? All right, we're gonna move on to public comments, questions, anything raised at the meeting? Anybody have any concerns or questions about? Will we call the comments, make a motion to adjourn?
Cott?
Yes.
Schaefer, this is Jones, Kyle?
Yes.
This is Kyle?
Yes. No.
This is Chris.
Our next scheduled meeting will be September 4th, 6:00 PM?